Hey, welcome to the North Idaho Experience. In today's episode, Dave and I sit down with JD Claridge. He is running for Coeur d'Alene City Council. He's a conservative, family man, looking to keep North Idaho and Coeur d'Alene a good place for families to live. All right, enjoy it. Check it out. And remember, voting is on November 4th. It's coming up fast. Make sure you get out and vote. And please check out our Judicial Watch Group podcasts for more information on judges out there. That's a very important foundation of our community. And if you guys are looking to make the move up here or already live up here and need help with real estate needs, our real estate team, also called North Idaho Experience, specializes in helping conservative families find their freedom in North Idaho. All right, JD Claridge, welcome to the show, running for Coeur d'Alene City Council. This is good. We've had, well, you reached out to us after we had Doc Larson on and I've had a bunch of people reach out. The elections are coming up. Now we're at the point where like, if we don't squeeze them in this week, we're not going to be able to edit them and turn them around in time. So I know we have a gal running for mayor of Spirit Lake, I believe. She's coming on later this week as well. But so I appreciate this time. Thank you for taking the time to meet with us and to have these conversations. I think it's very important. We really pride ourselves in being able to provide information to the public because we are deeply invested in this community. So thank you for taking the time.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, wow. So background, who are you? What do you do?
Yeah.
Where are you at?
I'm JD Claridge. I grew up in, I was born in Montana, grew up in Spokane, and have lived in North Idaho for the last 20 years or so, previously in Sandpoint.
So you're not even a local, huh?
Well, not really local.
That counts. I'm someone who's gonna say it. I'm just teasing.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, there are some people, I mean, born and raised here in Coeur d'Alene. And that's, that's not me, unfortunately. But we came here as a family, a lot of times, you know, for city beach and things when I was young. And yeah, it's, so growing up around here, I'm definitely invested in this, in this region. And I want to really, you know, bring the values that I see are important to city council. So but a little more about my background, I married my beautiful wife Kara, and we have five kids together. And yeah, we have one boy and four girls. And they're, you know, pride of my life and my wife as well. So yeah, and really, I have not been involved in politics much. I did run for city council previously, Coeur d'Alene. But other than that, I'm a businessman by trade. So I have a company called X Craft that develops drones for various applications, public safety is one. And as well as agriculture, security, mapping, those, those kind of applications.
Do you guys build them from the ground up? Or how's this work?
We build from the ground up. We do get parts from various places, but we do all the, all the assembly work ourselves. And we have several different products. And we do it right here in Hayden. We used to be in downtown Coeur d'Alene, but now we're in Hayden.
That's so cool. How big are these things? Are you talking little ones or enormous ones?
They're smaller, what would be considered class one. So they're below about 12 pounds. I mean, and we have seven different products.
Sounds pretty big to me, honestly.
Yeah, that's pretty big. It's not one you can ride in, though, you know?
Okay.
Right. Okay. So you brought up something real quick, and I want to jump right into it. You brought up that you wanted to bring something to the city council. What exactly? You talked about values and everything else. What is it that you're looking to bring?
Right. So, so family values. So my platform, my vision is, is to elevate Coeur d'Alene. So I don't say that to elevate buildings in Coeur d'Alene has, is sometimes happening downtown, but really to elevate the voices of the people that live north of I-90. I think that there's a lot of families up there with more conservative values. And I don't think that is currently represented well. And the reason elevate is because the, the elevation of the property north of I-90 is actually about 200 feet higher than downtown Coeur d'Alene. So that's why, that's where elevate came from.
I like that. You're, you're right. I think there is a large, or there's a lot of representation of the downtown, you know, Fort Sherman neighborhood, Sanders Beach, but you're, a lot of the population is north of I-90. A lot of the families live north of I-90. And maybe even more of the conservative people, I would say.
I would say that also. Yeah. And that's where we live. And, and, you know, the communities like Coeur d'Alene Place, Canfield, Indian Meadows, you know, those, those neighborhoods, the landings. It's a lot of, a lot of families, a lot of single family homes, and a lot of parks and trails and things. I mean, that's what draws families.
Yeah. What, what seat are you running for in council? And who, who holds that right now?
I'm running for seat six, and that's currently, the incumbent is Kiki Miller.
Okay. Are we, I've never talked to Kiki Miller.
I don't think I have either.
I've, I've actually heard mixed reviews depending on who you talk to. So nothing against her. I've never, I don't have a personal opinion. I've never met her. But I have heard, and maybe this is just hearsay, that she's more left leaning. Is that accurate?
That would be accurate.
Okay.
And I would say that's the case for pretty much all of city council.
Which is disturbing, once you start to find that out, and you're a conservative living in Coeur d'Alene in North Idaho, which is one of the more densely populated conservative regions in the country, to find out that the city council of the largest city in North Idaho is somewhat left leaning.
Right. Yeah. What do you, so, you know, obviously, and I'm, I'm open for anybody, right? I've never been one of those people that like, you have to be of a certain political party or anything else. But at the same time, I have a tendency to, you know, side with one over the other, just because of values and everything else and where I stand. However, and that's how most people are, and, and politics has become such a dirty thing. But what, what is it right now that plagues our city council in Coeur d'Alene? Where are things not getting done that currently exist?
I would say a lot having to do with growth. There's, there's really a favoring, I would say, of developers and their needs currently. And so that's led to really, like, the high rises that we see going in downtown, which don't really provide housing for locals. It's really for, you know, for the most time, or for the most part, part-time residents that, that live in those. And so that's not really serving our community well. And same thing with even the development that's happening around Riverstone, and what they're talking about with Cortair. A lot of that is a lot of multifamily, very limited green spaces and things. So I think that what, what needs to happen is that we really need to promote family-friendly housing, what I would call family-friendly housing, which for the most part is single-family homes. Now, these can be smaller, single-family homes, because I know that, you know, pricing is, is an issue. But the real estate market, we can only control so much locally.
Certainly.
So, but we can, we can definitely promote single-family homes over multifamily, you know, large apartment complexes and that sort of thing. We can promote building parks. I mean, I love the Landings Park, which is out by us. We, we go there with the family all the time. I mean, it's a big open area, you know, play equipment for, for kids and everything. My daughter broke her arm on the monkey bars. But
Classic. You know, we've all been there.
Yeah.
You know, you're right. And talking about multifamily, you're, you're gonna get Dave fired up because he, he definitely has opinions on that, which is good. I think like Coeur d'Alene Place did an excellent job with the parks that they incorporated in there. I haven't seen a plan for Cortair. I'm hoping it'll be the same, but I don't know. Maybe you've seen it.
I've seen it. I've seen the plans, and it's not. It's, it's a lot of mixed use. So there are some single-family homes in it, but it's a lot of, you know, larger apartments and townhomes and that sort of thing, and limited green spaces and things. So it's what, not what I would consider very family-friendly. It's not like Coeur d'Alene Place. I love Coeur d'Alene Place, too, by the way.
Coeur d'Alene Place is an amazing neighborhood.
It's a lot, I think, pretty much all, single-family homes. I don't think there are apartments in it. Well, there might be a few, but yeah.
So how does it, how does it affect, you know, obviously, I love the, the family atmosphere and everything else. I think that's important. I think it's a cornerstone that, that America's lost a little control on, and I think we need to have. But how does that affect? So when we talk about downtown, I've always told people, I'm like, there's, there's a drastic separation where the 90 wraps around, right? Downtown is its own, its own little thing. We lived in Coeur d'Alene Place for six years. We just moved about three and a half months ago. So very familiar with that area, very familiar with coming downtown, and definitely feeling a different vibe when I go downtown. Little more touristy, little more attraction, little more fun down there, right? But then I go back and I have the family atmosphere and that type of. So what is, what is your opinion then of downtown? When people start talking about the high rises downtown, how do you think that, moving forward downtown, how do you think things need to change downtown? And how does that necessarily affect the communities like Coeur d'Alene Place?
Yeah. Great question. I don't think that downtown needs to change much. What I'm, what I'm wanting is just to represent the, the rest of us who live outside of downtown, who, I think downtown is great. I actually, I actually love going downtown, especially in the summertime, you know, by the lake and Tubbs Hill and everything. I love it. I think we have a great, great vibe downtown, great communities down there. So I don't think much needs to change there. I do think that we, we should lean into the tourist aspect of, of downtown. And people want to come here from all over the country and all over the world, really.
Right.
So I think that we need, we need to lean into that. And that can be, you know, we can, we can also offset taxes for people, the rest of us, I think, who, you know, if, if we do like a hotel tax, I'm, I'm a fan of that, where that's offsetting our, our taxes, you know, as residents here. So that's something I would be a proponent of.
So it sounds like a lot of your platform really is about the locals, taking care of locals, right? I think a lot of people run off of that. And they say, oh, we want to do the right thing for locals, but it turns into this, well, we're doing this. I know you don't like it, but ultimately it's good for you. And I think that's bullshit, if I'm being completely honest. And I really think that, you know, I've been, I've been calling on it for years and would love to see people in the city council to turn around and say, okay, if we're going to make a financial decision for downtown, we're going to allow this in. How does it impact locals, right? I mean, even tourists, right? If you were to put a Disneyland downtown, well, how's it going to affect locals? And how do we mitigate that for locals and put them first? You know, I've always said it'd be neat to see the city council or somebody else turn around and say, hey, we're going to do something that's going to support locals with local restaurants, with local parking, with local access to things that other people from out of town can't, discounts on things, right? Being able to take the burden off of people, because living in a resort town can get pretty expensive for the people living there. You know, I've said it forever. I know they have some sort of parking thing. I think my wife does it every year.
Yeah.
But it would be nice to know that as a local, that when I go downtown, and I got a Cootney County plate, that they're going to scan it and walk right past it, right? To be able to be taken care of in that type of sense, to be like, hey, we're going to draw the taxes, we're going to draw the money, we're okay with the hotel taxes. And people that come here, they can pay to come here. That's fine. People will continue to do that because we have water. That's pretty much the attraction for everybody.
Yeah.
But it would be nice to see, it sounds like you're kind of in that realm of take care of the people that live here first. Because the people that are going to come here, are going to come here, they're going to have a good time, no matter what. There's enough stuff for them. But how do we make it to where it's less impactful on, on locals and still make them feel like they own the town?
Right. I totally agree. And I don't know how many parking tickets I've had to pay over the years. And I've, you know, I have Cootney County plate. So I would definitely be in favor of, of that sort of aspect, whether it's not, you know, issuing parking tickets for, for locals. I don't, I don't think that, you know, we, I do love going downtown in the summer, especially because it's just beautiful. I mean, there's great events down there in summer and, and winter. So I think we need to support, or you're right, make sure that we are putting our local community first. I mean, we're the ones who are invested in this community. We're the ones who are paying taxes. The tourists help, and, and it's great to have them, because that's, that's an asset that a lot of towns don't have, right?
Certainly.
So let's, let's lean into that. But let's also not put the burden on our citizens, you know, to support the expense that it is to, you know, to have that tourist downtown.
Yeah. Yeah. The tourism is extremely valuable to this day. It supports so many of our local businesses, and we are all about local businesses. I would like to see, we've talked about this many times on here, the, the designation of Coeur d'Alene as a resort city. Currently, state law does not allow that because it's a cap at 10,000 population, which is antiquated, in my opinion. There's virtually no tourist cities, you know, resort cities in, in Idaho that are less than 10,000. Sandpoint has managed to do that. But by designated a resort city, then we can charge that hotel tax or bed tax, which would bring a lot of money into a budget that I think, from what I'm hearing, is not going to be balanced in the future, for a number of reasons. And I think that would be very beneficial. Like Dave said, people will still come here. It's not even, it wouldn't even be that much on them. But it would be a big deal to the local community.
Right. Yeah, there's, I mean, there's, there's a, I'm sorry, I don't remember what I was heading toward there.
That's all right. We're talking about resort tax. And, and I think we need a big push from our policymakers up here to get down to Boise and, and start making waves.
Oh, that's right. And, and I, I already started that process, actually. I'm very, I'm good friends with Senator Ben Taves and Elaine Price, and Joe Alfieri, and several other of our legislators. And I've already talked with them about that very issue, because, I mean, I think that is antiquated, as you say, to, to prevent us from being able to collect.
Right. Why can't we just make our own decision and just, just say it, like, we're, we're, it's our own city. Let's do it.
Yeah. And you're local. A lot of people love that, right? They lean into, oh, this guy's local. He was born in Montana, lived in Spokane, lived in Coeur d'Alene, like, you've been around this area. How do you feel about people that are, I don't know everybody's background on, on city council, but what's your take on having locals take those positions as opposed to people that have maybe been here for five, 10 years?
Definitely in favor of, of locals. Obviously, we're, we're invested in this community. We, we understand it. We, we know the, you know, what, what the town is like. I, I don't think that, I think there are, you know, there would be several locals that are on city council currently. I mean, they've lived here a long time. But another thing that I think needs to change from, you know, from the legislative level is to have districts where, on city council. So right now, it's not. So all of Coeur d'Alene votes for all of city council. Where it should be, as it is in most, most areas, most larger towns, especially, is there's districts for city councils. So I would represent, you know, the, the area 401 district, which is around Coeur d'Alene Place and those areas. So that's where we need to go. But we need to also work with legislators to, to make that change, because it's, it's, I believe, right now, it's set at 100,000 people is where they start to district out the town. And Coeur d'Alene isn't at 100,000.
And we may never get there just because of geographical limitations, right?
Right.
I tell people, Coeur d'Alene, we kind of sold off all land. Like, there's not any land here yet. Greenstone is finishing up the last bit of development in Coeur d'Alene Place right now. So there's not a lot to develop out here, which is kind of good if you're getting on city council, because you don't have to worry about these mass developments. But you brought up multi-housing. I think that's something that, you know, when you talk about the population density, you talk about people that are quote unquote, local, that are invested in the community. I think a lot of it, you know, a lot of people think like, oh, you don't want to deal with rentals and apartments, because you, you just want people to buy homes. It's like, actually, what I want to do is I want to promote self-responsibility and self-wealth, right? I would rather see somebody be able to buy a house at a, a cheaper house than end up paying, you know, whoever, because they own 15 apartment complexes. I think the distribution of wealth in a community is reflective of how well the community does. And I think one of the reasons why Coeur d'Alene has done so well is because there is a pretty good distribution of wealth. When I get people that call us and say, hey, I want to buy a multifamily apartment complex, I'm like, yeah, it's kind of the wrong spot. Maybe Spokane, somewhere else. But up here, I don't really have much for you. And I think that's a good thing. So, you know, I would really encourage, if, if you're talking about these single-family, you know, family lifestyle, encouraging and creating opportunities, like you said, even with its smaller homes, or even subsidies to help people purchase homes, is probably more beneficial for the community in long-term, because it allows money to stay with the individual families, and allows them to build wealth, too. And you're going to see a big turnaround.
It's, it's 100%. And I was just talking to somebody about this recently. But having equity in a home, it's a buy-in for the community. We know those people are committed now. And I know it's not easy, right? The homes are very expensive up here. I understand that. But if we can get more people to buy homes, now they have buy-in in the community, they're invested in this, and, and they're more likely to stay, they're more likely to vote, they're more likely to do a lot of different things that help build this community better and better. So I'm not smart enough to figure this out, because I know the home prices are expensive. I don't know the answer. But we need to have more conversations about it and bring in whoever we need to bring into to help solve this problem.
Well, I don't think there's one particular answer, but there are things that we can do. I mentioned, you know, and I also, by the way, want to really support homeownership, because I think that's, that's critical. Like, I remember our very first home that my wife and I bought, and it was small, on a little lot, but it was ours, you know? And we were able to build equity and move up from there. And that's really what we, what we want for our community, because it is buy-in to, to the community. And so the, the things that we can do to support that are bringing the minimum lot size down. And that's actually also something that we have to work with state legislators to do, because the, the minimum lot size is, is fairly large, actually, right now. You don't need a, a large lot. But you do want a single-family home. So it can be a small home, say, you know, even 1,000, 1,200 square feet home. So it will be more affordable, especially if it's on a smaller lot, because land's expensive. But it allows people to actually buy that, rather than renting an apartment somewhere where you're not, you're not able to really build equity. You're just paying rent all your life. And that's not what we want, long-term for our community.
How about, how about budget? Have you been able to review the budget for the city council? And is that available to us? Like, can we go on there and take a look at it?
You can look at it, if you, if you want to go to, on the city's website.
They have it posted on there. I figured they did.
But yes, and I've, I've looked at it. We, by the way, we're, last year, we were almost $2 million over budget. And so they had to pull money from the reserve fund. I don't know if you guys have talked about that here, but
We've, we've just tipped at it, you know, talking with various people. And there's, I think, a legitimate concern that we are falling short, and there's the option of raising taxes or finding other sources of income. And nobody wants us to rate, and nobody wants taxes raised, right?
Right. I don't want to raise taxes, and I wouldn't raise taxes. I wouldn't support that. The other side of it, obviously, is to take a look at spending. What are we spending money on? What do we really need to be spending money on? I think we really need to look at those in depth. I like the idea of, you know, really getting down to the level of looking at, you know, the, the current employees on, you know, our city employees and, and having them provide ideas for how we can save money. I think that that's great. I mean, they, they know how, how the money is being spent and maybe ways that we can
Yeah. The problem is, you get politicians, sorry to call you a politician, but you get people that are politicians that come in there and they have an agenda, right? They, they run off of, oh, well, I want to, you know, put money here, allocate money here. And they get in, and then that's what they fight for, as opposed to looking at the whole budget. I am a firm believer that you, you see people all the time that don't have a lot of money, and they live just fine, and they're happy. It's not about the money that you take in. It's about the money that you spend, right?
Right.
And Idaho, to a fault, hates taxes. I mean, we can run a levy for a school and say, we're going to lose the children. And everybody's like, whatever, deal with it, right? Like, we've literally turned around and said, but, but there is some common sense behind that. That, what is the budget for the, the city right now? Does anybody know?
I don't know.
What are, what our annual budget is? Roughly?
Roughly 20 million.
Okay. So 20 million, so we're roughly 10% behind. I mean, we really need a new high school somewhere up here, whether that be Hayden or Coeur d'Alene or Post Falls, whatever. We need more schools. We need things like that. And those are, those are damn near a year's budget to do something like that, right? That's government funding and everything else to get that done. But I think allocation, where you're at, like diving into that budget, I don't necessarily think it's a bring more money in situation. There's definitely some ways that I think we should. And you touched on it with like the bed tax and certain things from people that come here and don't treat the place like they do their own house, right?
Right.
But I think that's, that's the tough thing. I've seen some money that the city spends for beautification and a few different things that don't necessarily benefit the people that live here. And
The, my, my fear is, and we, we will back public safety till our last breath. My fear is, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the police department is one of the biggest employers and probably one of the biggest budget chunks in there.
Yeah.
My fear is that someone would come in and try to cut that. And if we lose that, you know, look at, this is sitting right in front of us right now. This is total crime rate by state. Idaho has the lowest, officially, the lowest crime rate by state now. And we just took the lead.
I'm willing to bet that's lower up here than it is in Boise.
Yes. So I, I would argue, like, we don't touch public safety. In fact, I think they need more money.
I might completely be misleading here, but I'm pretty sure the budget for PD, when I was around there, was between five and $6 million.
Which is probably the biggest
25%.
Chunk, right?
And, and like I said, don't, somebody's going to say, you're wrong. Here's the budget. I'll go take a look at it. But I think it was somewhere around there, five to $6 million. And realistically, who wants to live in a community that's not safe?
I don't. And, and I definitely support public safety. And, and I would totally agree with the budget that, that's there and, and potentially needing to expand it. The, the issues that I see are for things that I don't think serve our community, and our money is being spent on. We, we spend a lot of money on public art in Coeur d'Alene.
I've seen that. That was what I was citing.
That is, I knew you were going there.
I see a bunny downtown that's very cool, next to the Iron Horse, very cool. But I'm not certain I'm sold at $50,000.
No. So things like that are areas that we can definitely take a look at. I don't at all support cutting public safety funds. I'm, I'm a supporter of the levies for school and, and fire and, and as well. I think that we need to invest in our community. We need to be safe. We need to be, you know, have, have our firefighters protecting us. So there's, yeah, I would say that there's other areas that don't serve the locals well. And those, those areas we can look at to, to potentially cut.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I just made me think of talking about public safety. Chief White just put in his retirement paperwork, so he
I believe he's in January, something?
Okay. So there'll be a new police chief in the running. And I know there's talk about bringing in someone from within or hiring outside. Do you have thoughts on that?
I would be supportive of inside, someone who's already there and understands our community and, and welcomes that. I don't know, I don't know Chief White very well. I don't know if I've actually met him, but, and I also don't know, I'm not involved in that world very much. Thankfully, I haven't been in jail very much, but
Very much.
But yeah, so I would be in favor of mostly bringing someone in from the inside.
Can I, can I, can I give you something to chew on over here, too? Because honestly, this is a big thing for me, is I want people definitely that can, that can take in information. I always say, if you're going to be president of the United States, you're not the most qualified person in the world. You're just somebody that understands how to take experts' information and make a good, relevant decision, right? So I'll tell you about Lee White. So Lee White came in in 2015. Prior to that, there's rumors of Coeur d'Alene being the meth capital of the world. All sorts of crime and everything. And he came in, and Part One crimes are down about 74%. Lee White was an outside hire from Mesa, Arizona. Him and Dave Hagar came together. It was a change in leadership that needed to happen here in Coeur d'Alene. And I am firmly a believer of, of looking both inside and outside. I think that there are some major mistakes when we bring people from the inside and don't evaluate outside individuals. I think that's huge, because you can get in a rut. Lee White, God bless the man. I actually really liked the guy. I worked for him for a couple of years. He was fantastic. Did a really, really good job navigating politics and everything else, kept us on track. Very good at taking care of the guys. But, but Lee's done. And I mean that sincerely. If he was listening to this, I'd be okay saying that. He started to get disgruntled over years because it's a tough position to be in. And right now, I would tell you that my stance personally is to find out what the guys and gals that are wearing uniforms want. And I think that's really important. And I think something that is missed by city managers, mayors, politicians, or people that are making the decisions, is that they are communicating with, with, with command staff, right? And if they say, hey, we want to keep things going the way that they're going, they have a tendency to go, cool, let's do it. The police department has been great for a while, but where's the morale of the guys? Where are they at right now? I think that's something that has to be considered and
What's the best way to do that, Dave? Like, because you can't go to the command staff.
You can't. You have to, I think that there has to be consideration given to the men and women that actually protect the community. I have been huge on this. Every time that I had a new chief in the fire department, my first thing that I would say, if I got a chance to, is don't come in and just change things. For the next person that takes over for sheriff, for Bob Norris, don't walk in and change things. Come in and sit in the shit for just a little bit. Get a feel for where everybody's at, and then slowly implement changes you see necessary. But I think it would be crucial for the city council, the ones making the decision on a hire, not an elected position, to actually call the association in and sit down away from the command staff and everybody else and ask the association, how do you guys feel about this? Do you have a frontrunner? How's morale? Do you guys feel safe and supported? Can you do your job? Are you lacking equipment? If you don't ask those questions, then we're missing out on some of the most important things when it comes to public safety. I have worked for departments with high morale, with low morale. I've worked for productive departments, slug departments. I've done that. So I think that truly is what needs to happen, is there needs to be a sit-down with the association before any decisions are made whatsoever, to take into account the men and women that are going to take those orders.
Yeah. That's the way to do it. Because the guys and gals on the street might not want to speak up fearing retaliation down the road. So I think the association will have the correct information, and then they have a representative that would be able to
Yeah. And that's, and that's a good leader, right? I mean, even, even Lee White was great at it. He'd come in and say, hey, what are your thoughts? We'd all give him his thoughts. And he'd debate with us for a little bit and go, cool, I don't like your thoughts. We're going with this. And you're like, right on. At least you heard what I had to say. You had a rebuttal. I understand that the city council typically, who is it? It's the, the mayor, the city planner, and the head of HR that make the hire, right?
Right.
Those three people have a huge weight upon them. And those people have to not be bought or influenced by anything else other than taking in the whole, taking the whole into consideration, right? So if they're making a decision because, well, we really like the guys that are in command staff, they need to sit down with them and have good conversations. And they need to sit down with the association, too. They need They need to realize that the decision they make is going to be huge for everybody in Coeur d'Alene based off of these statistics to keep this place safe.
Agreed.
What, uh, you own a small business in town. Um, what can Coeur d'Alene do to attract more businesses? Cause that's another great way to, to get tax revenue is to bring in more business. And I'm not talking about, you know, big box stores necessarily. I'm talking about locally supported, uh, in the community. We're hiring within, we're providing jobs for our people. Like, how can we promote that?
Well, I fully agree, uh, that we, we don't need to focus on, you know, big box stores or, or that sort of business. I mean, I want, I want to have more small businesses, mom and pop operations, and I am a, a business owner. So I, I get that. I understand what those needs are for those, you know, those businesses. So I want to support it. I think that there's, there's things that we can do in our city code to encourage, uh, small businesses to, to be in locations and not, you know, more Walmarts or, or things like that. We don't need that. Uh, that doesn't, that doesn't help our community. So, as far as what those things are, I think that, um, you know, tax structures and, and potentially zone, zone allocations for smaller businesses are, are areas that we can do that.
Yeah. What, what's your, do you have a question on that? What's your, I mean, we kind of touch on this, but like, why do you want to do this? Why do you want to take this on? I'm sure you're busy.
Well, I don't know if I did really, honestly, to be honest, I declared at the last possible second, actually.
Those are the best types in my opinions. It's the ones that have lifelong ambitions that worry me. It's the guys and gals that are like, I don't want to do this, but I see it as a duty. That, that attracts me.
I, I feel it's a call honestly for me. It is public service. What I see is public service because I want to be the voice for people that aren't, aren't being heard right now. And, uh, I think that's, that's a duty. Honestly, it's not something that I have, you know, strived all my life to be a politician. That's by no means. Uh, you know, I'm more of an engineer, kind of inventor and business owner. But this is, I, I see the need for it. I see that my values are not being represented right now. And I, and I know that a lot of my people, my people, um, you know, those families and, and that to live in the areas around me. I don't feel that they're being supported or their ideas and views are being heard.
Yeah. Um, the incumbent that you're running against, Kiki, um, how long has she been in there? Do you know?
Long time. I think, uh, I don't know exactly. I think it's, uh, over 20 years.
Okay. Yeah. In my opinion, like once again, I'm not talking trash. I don't know Kiki. In my opinion, I, I feel like there should always be limits on people being in public office. That's not the purpose. We're not, it wasn't designed for people to go in there, you know, like Congress and be in there for 30 years plus, like it wasn't designed that way. It just opens too many doors for, not even necessarily corruption, although that's a, that's a possibility, but, um, you know, favors, things like that, that, that may seem harmless and maybe harmless, but, uh, I, I think you lose touch and I think you become complacent if you're in a, in office too long.
Yeah. And I, I think, you know, for, for people that are voters and everything else, if you don't like the way that Coeur d'Alene is going, I think it's important to encourage people to vote because when you say that you have such a conservative area of such a conservative state, but yet you have somewhat left leaning, council members, that just shows how emotion plays into it, right? We have gotten to the point where, you know, people get tired. They're working, they're doing whatever. They just, they just continue to move their days. But then you have somebody that's a squeaky wheel, which you see on the no kings protests and all these other things, right? It's a, it's the squeaky wheel. It's the minority that ends up being coming the majority. Even though they don't still have the numbers, they're just willing to get out there and vote because they want change. People have been pretty complacent in North Idaho. You know, a lot of people say, oh, the, the outsiders are the ones that destroyed this place. I'm like, well, it was the insiders making the decisions, right? To influence people and to do the things that were done. In fact, I, I joke about it all the time and I'm not even going to say the name because I don't want to cause a war here. But when people get mad at me as a real estate agent, they say, oh, you guys are just, look at all these homes you're selling on the prairie and you're killing it. I'm like, do you know who owned all that land on the prairie? I want to make sure you know that, that that was a local. It was a local family that bought up all that land and they're selling it to Greenstone and Hayden Homes and everything else. Right? Like that was a local decision. That wasn't my decision, right? I brought up a family that was extremely conservative. Those escaping a state where they couldn't have a gun or a fricking potato gun for all that matter, right? And they wanted to come somewhere where they wanted to protect it and stand up for it. So, um, anyways, so I digress a little bit, but.
Well, that's, that's a hot topic, dude. We talk about that a lot because we get, we get a lot of pushback, a lot of, you know, on our YouTube channel. We get nasty comments all the time from people that are like, you're ruining this state. I would argue that the opposite. Um, we specifically attract very conservative families. Most have a public safety or veteran background or both. And they come up here, they're running, literally running, giving up a lot to leave where they're, where they're coming from because their values do not align. And they're trying to come to a place where their values align. So I think leaning into that, um, is probably a more powerful thing. Those families that come up here, I mean, how many times do they come up and like, hey, I want to get involved. How do I get? They ask us how to get involved in this community. They want to come out. They, they for damn sure will get out and vote. I bet if you looked at the, the amount of voters for, from people that are born and raised here versus those that come in, I would argue that those that are coming in are way more likely to vote.
Pretty aggressive voters for sure.
Absolutely.
I would agree. And, and it is surprising that we live in such a conservative town and yet our, our, uh, city council is more left leaning. I mean, why, why is that?
Why?
And I, and I think it is a lot because of maybe complacency of, of the, the majority of people, honestly, that live here, that they just aren't getting out to vote. So we need to, we, those people need to vote and, uh, as well as the, what I would call refugees that are coming here. To, uh, you know, to escape what's really tyranny, honestly, to come to this free place. So those people are engaged and let's, let's engage in more, but I want to be a voice for those people.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, they definitely are engaged. Um, and they know how bad it can get and they know how quickly it can get bad. Look at Washington. Washington was 10 years ago was a good state. Now Washington on the latest stats is fourth highest crime in the country. Which is shocking and it's right next door and yet we're number 50.
So when I grew up in Spokane, it wasn't like that.
Right. Not that long ago it switched.
That wasn't that long ago. So I, I think that there was a plan and that plan is still in place actually here. We're at early stages of it, but if we can get good people in, into positions of leadership and government, then I don't think we can let this turn into a Washington.
What about regulation? Are there any regulations that you looked into or anything else that, um, you want to see change or go back to the way it used to be? Or limit regulations or anything else like that in terms of city council, buildings, anything else like that?
I think that there is, we can definitely take a look at how hard it is for, you know, development to happen and all the paperwork that needs to happen. We can limit regulation when it comes to building. There, like you said, there isn't a lot left to build in Coeur d'Alene, but there are, you know, there are pockets, there's areas like just small lots and things that we can, we can look at and infill with, with good, family friendly kind of development, whether it be small business or, or single family homes. But there are things that we can do on city council to limit regulation.
Okay. I know we're, you know, I'm, I'm at on a garage right now. I'm amazed at how many inspections there are for that.
Yeah.
Just the epoxy inspection. I'm like, good God, you're just drilling a hole and putting glue in there. But I will say, you know, it's funny because when we talk about things changing, I think, you know, people don't realize the subtleties. And I don't know if this changes how you make regulations for the city or not, but people, I, I went off the other day about permits. I was, I was losing my mind about permits the other day, not on building permits, uh, per se, but lack of permitting. Okay. This is North Idaho. You find a lot of homes where there's a lack of permit. And immediately what I see a lot of people do when they go to buy a home, they go, oh, well, that wasn't permitted. I'm not going to buy it. Or they got to fix that. And I'm like, hold on. You just came from somewhere that you complained about regulation all day long. And now instead of hiring a contractor to come over, somebody that actually knows what they're doing and take a look at it and tell you whether or not it's safe, regardless of whether or not it meets a permit. Instead you immediately go to get the government involved because you want a government stamp on everything that you do. And I don't think people realize the subtleties of allowing more and more regulation, even in building code. I get it. There's a safety element, right? I get it. I don't want to be the one that speaks up and then says, don't do that. And then next thing you know, somebody gets hurt or dies or whatever else. What I'm saying is that it's amazing how many people don't even realize how much they actually want to be regulated and actually want government involvement.
Well, you've talked about this before with, uh, with 4th of July fireworks, right?
Yes.
You have a great example with that.
Dude, we burned down a home. Not me. I'm just saying like, we burned down a home. In fact, I know the people that lost their home. It was devastating. It was up in Hayden. I felt terrible to see what happened to them. But then all of a sudden the chants start, stop fireworks, no fireworks. Like, hold on. Somebody knew that they had illegal fireworks, just like everybody buys. Okay. They all get them. They knew the danger of them, just like I did when I shot off six inch shells in my neighborhood. One of them fell over, went into a house, caught the house on fire. That person should be held responsible. I'm okay with that. I'm okay with the responsibility there of saying, okay. And I understand that it's a dangerous activity, but I would never be the one to turn around and say, okay, you know what, guys? We're going to cite everybody that's doing this now. No more celebrating, no more of it. No. That's the problem is that we take one small thing that's devastating, tragic, and we try to prevent it ever from happening again.
Right. And you're not going to do that. I think it's individual responsibility, as you said.
Perfect example. I'm building my house right now. This, this drove me absolutely crazy. You know those socket, the outlets that have the little childproof plastic? Yeah. You have to put those in a new home now. You don't have a choice. Even in the great state of Idaho, they're forcing me to put those stupid ass outlets in my house.
The ones that have the permanent plugs in there?
They're a pain in the ass to push anything in. You can't.
Do you know anybody that's ever been electrocuted by a light socket?
No.
No?
I don't.
Other than myself. Just.
But I did, I knew.
Just to be clear, right? That's crazy.
That's crazy. That's one of those dumbass regulations that I'm like, come on now. That's personal accountability. I should be responsible for my own children sticking shit in the outlets.
But this is where I caution you because that's the exact example of emotion. Somebody probably lost their child.
Yes.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm not saying, man, if we could go back and prevent that, oh my gosh, but then at what cost, right?
Right.
And I hate to be that person because somebody's going to come on here and be like, you sick person, you said that people die. They do. People do die and I can't prevent all of it. And we can't as a community do that unless we want to live in a bubble and give up all of our freedoms, every single one. And, uh, you know, now you can't have the, the outlet on the, I think they actually rescinded that one. There was an outlet you couldn't put on the, uh, um, on an island. Because somebody had pulled down a chili pot on them and all of a sudden, well, because that one person did it, now everybody has to be overly safe from that one, one specific thing. Because that is a mom who, God, I, I can't even say I wouldn't do the same thing. Probably went and was like, you guys need to fix this. And then all of a sudden there's a national code, right?
Right.
And it changes everything for everybody and it sucks. I get it.
I didn't mean to go down that road, but it's, it's near and dear to my heart.
But it's the emotion of it because the emotion actually drove politics. How many hours of legislation do you think went into that?
Right.
I mean, probably tens of millions of dollars went into changing an outlet.
Yes. So yeah, yeah. I could switch them all out myself after the house closes, but how time consuming and expensive would that be?
I'm doing it. I'll do it.
I mean, I, if I get frustrated enough, I might. I'm stubborn.
Well, we live in a very freedom-loving area and, uh, I've, I've seen it multiple times now. You mentioned fireworks. There was a ban on fireworks downtown one year. I don't know if it was last year. I don't know if they did it last year, but previous years. And, you know, there were signs everywhere and, and people still launched fireworks during 4th of July. I mean, it's, it's like they, they ignored it. I mean, because you know, we're, we're a freedom-loving place and people are going to do that. I mean, so I think that there's, uh, there, there is still that, that spirit of independence and freedom here that we, we need to really honor.
Protect your, protect yourself and take your own responsibility. If you do something that's unsafe and you hurt somebody, you're going to own it. Up to the letter of the law, right? You're going to own it. If you did something that you shouldn't have done, you're going to own it. But are we going to go back to 2021 where you wear a mask? And it's because I can't say that word because they block us on, on YouTube, but, um, you know, are they going to take us back to that where you go, well, because somebody died of that, you have to wear a mask because they could potentially save you or save them. No. Stay away from me.
Yeah. It's that easy. What, uh, you touched on this earlier, high rises downtown. This is a hot topic. It, I have mixed feelings on it. Um, where do you stand on that?
Well, first of all, I, I know that we live in a tourist place here. I mean, uh, people want to come here from all over the, the world. And so I think that we need to have, we need to support that and, but I, I don't think that those, those do support the, um, the locals. You know, locals are not buying those condos that are on the high rises for the most part. And so, um, I think that we need to, to focus more on, uh, the development in, in the areas of Coeur d'Alene that are still left to be developed, which is Cortez one. And then there are these pockets around the town that can still be developed, but not focus so much on, on high rises. I don't, I don't see that as, as something that is, is really helping us at long-term. I think after these, you know, what is it? Three right now, there's kind of been these migrating cranes around downtown. I think after those are done, I, I would not support more after that.
So the one that I really have a, a fit with, you know, a lot of people get mad, oh, Hagadon, whatever else they, you know, a lot of people don't like Hagadon, but they do a lot for the community and they have for literally a hundred years. Okay. I will say that I'm in more support of the resort tower going up, something that is locally based and locally honors the community, right? Puts on the 4th of July, does the Christmas lighting ceremony. I mean, they're invested in this community. However, I'm not okay with a Marriott going up down there. One of the things that I've loved about downtown is when you go down there, you don't see a name that is associated with anywhere else, other than Peter Pit and their headquarters is here. So we just toured it the other day. But, um, you know what I mean? That was one of the things that makes downtown unique. So I would say if anything, you know, putting up the high rise, the Thomas Georgetown, okay, maybe it makes a skyline, looks cool. Yes, it blocks some water views, whatever else, but at least that's ownership and something. Somebody's coming in, um, they are buying property, even if it's vacation rentals, but having a Marriott downtown just kills it for me.
It does. And it's not really what, what this town is about. Um, and you mentioned Hagadon. I mean, he, he pretty much made this the resort town that it is. And, and that's part of our DNA. I mean, we're not going to get around that, I think. And supporting, uh, that sort of development that is from the Coeur d'Alene Resort and, and surrounding that, I mean, the golf course and everything. I think that's part of our, who we are.
Right.
As you mentioned, bringing in Marriott, I don't think that's who we are.
No, and I think that's, that's one of the things where I think our city council failed greatly right now. And I don't know what regu- regulations are in place, but that's the type of stuff that I don't want to see develop. I don't want a KFC downtown. I don't want to see those. I want the local business. I want the local resort. I want the things that made Coeur d'Alene what it is. And Marriott will never have an impact on this community in a positive way where people talk about how badass the Marriott is downtown. Nobody's going to say that.
Nope. On that note, how do we preserve the culture that we have downtown? I mean, it is definitely distinct, even though it is a resort town, it's still very much a small town. If you go to Coeur d'Alene Coffee Co, anytime of day, you're going to know five people in there. Like that's, that's just the way it is. I don't want to lose that. How do we keep from losing that? Do you have any thoughts on that?
I think there's, uh, as far as downtown, like I said, I think we have a really good culture that, that is there. And, and I had my business downtown for a long time. I was part of that culture, you know, I love it. I love walking down to, I was in the same building as Coeur d'Alene Coffee, but, um, going to the other coffee shops and, and walking around Tubbs Hill lunch break or whatever. That, that's, it's, it's a beautiful area in the park and McEwen Park. I think that, and that's something that we, we should preserve the character that we have there. I, I don't think that bringing in more national brands like Marriott or, or anything else are going to help that. So I, I would agree that our city, current city council has failed in allowing that because that, that is going to, it's almost like competition for what our current culture.
It's the single biggest building development failure that I've seen from our city council.
Yeah.
You want to build a hundred homes and put people in it that are going to live here in Coeur d'Alene. I don't care. But doing that, I have no, I have no, no pros to it.
No, we have plenty of, I, I would think plenty of beds downtown already. I mean, the resort's putting up another tower. They've got a ton. The resort's awesome. Sometimes they've done a few things that kind of bug me, uh, like Life Coffee getting smashed out. That was a big deal for the community. Uh, but then we have a lot of Airbnbs too. Um, where do you stand on that?
I'm in favor of Airbnbs. Uh, so my wife and I have actually done that on our own house. We've, we've allowed people to, to come in and usually it's a, a family that will come in because they want to go to Silverwood. So they'll come in and they, they stayed at our house. I, I'm in favor of that for homeowners. So whether they're renting out a room or the whole house, but their own house, I'm not as much of a fan of an outside, you know, say BlackRock or something that comes in, buys a bunch of properties and, and puts them on Airbnb. I don't know how much we can control that. Um, but I think there are things that we can do to make sure that it's, it's, it's local money staying local.
I think there are ways you can, and do they already do that where you have to live on the property as well?
No, 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 no. They don't do it now.
You don't have to do that, but you could do that, something like that, or it has to be locally owned to be an Airbnb. Because I agree with you. I don't think that out of state investors should be, they don't have any buy-in and that money's going right back to them. So they're, they're putting a burden on our infrastructure and our services and then really not bringing much back to the community.
It's a, it's a, it's a chore and there's been a lot of issues with the town failing to, um, you know, failing to enforce permits on Airbnbs. I know, uh, the girl down there that runs the Airbnbs and she's been phenomenal. Every time I have somebody asking if they can, you know, if there's going to be a moratorium or if they can do it or anything else like that, she's been doing a great job. But there's been a big failure in, in general for the city to collect. there's been a big failure in, in general for the city to collect on that type of revenue. Permits, um, enforcement of getting a permit, um, taxes on those types of things because once again, that's no different than the Marriott or anything else. It's not people that are coming here to invest in the community. It's people that are coming here to have a good time and check it out. And so there should be a way for us to get a use tax back from those things for sure.
I would agree with that.
Yeah. Um, we're getting there on time. Do you have, uh, I want to kind of just get your final thoughts on everything, like, why, why should someone vote for you over the incumbent?
Well, uh, I would say that I'm in support of, of locals and families and conservatives. And I want to represent the people that, that have those values. I think that it's important that we keep, uh, keep that, that, the community that we have here in Coeur d'Alene. And I, I, I think unfortunately our current city council has gotten out of touch with, uh, a lot of the locals, a lot of the local community and including myself. And so I think that if, if we can really lean into that and, uh, if, if, if you want to, uh, support those kinds of ideals as far as conservatives, um, then that I'd love your vote. I'm, I'm not a politician. I'm not a well-read speaker, as you can see. But I want to, I want to serve this community in that way.
That's cool.
Yeah. Um, I had a thought on that. Damn it. Just slipped my mind.
Well, we like having people like you, because we stay pretty neutral on it. You know what I mean? We want to get as many people in here so that there's obviously an opportunity for, for people to be educated on who they're voting for. Too many people go to the polls and they vote for the main thing, which is the president. And that's about all that. And they know very little about what even that person's doing. But, uh, we want people to be educated and at least have an opportunity to be informed and meet some of you. So they can make good decisions that they're going to be able to back.
I remembered what I was going to ask. Um, so we, I like the idea of districts because I, I don't know the pathway for, for the public to ask questions of the city council, other than going to council meetings, but like, how can we improve the communication, right? So you know what your constituents want? Cause maybe that's the disconnect. We have this very left-leaning city council or potentially left-leaning city council. I don't know. That's obviously out of touch with the base here, the voter base, the majority of the voters here are conservative. How do we improve that communication?
I think the only way is to get conservatives on the city council and that, that's because I know I have myself, you know, talked before city council and, and it was kind of like, you know, okay, you know, they didn't, they didn't hear what I had to say.
Right.
Uh, and my wife has done the same thing. So, um, it's, it's not a matter of, the people are coming and talking. You know, the, the community of Indian Meadows has come several times to talk about the issues of traffic and everything for the new developments that's going in Cortair. And it's like, um, they, they haven't heard them. They haven't really done what they're asking. So I think that have, we have to have people, as you said, whether it's districts, but let's start with getting a conservative into city council that will hear them and actually be on the inside to be able to effect change.
Yeah. Uh, is there any polling out? Do you know like where you stand yet or?
No, I, I don't.
Okay. Um, well, thank you. And, uh, you know, voting's November 4th is coming up, so please get out and vote. Uh, and I encourage you to do some research, those that are out there listening, don't just necessarily vote for the incumbent. That may not be the best choice. Try to find information out and, and we're happy to be a conduit of that information. And I have to plug, when it comes down to judges, um, watch our judicial watch group. That is a very informative way to learn about the judges that are out there because I assure you, not all of the incumbents are the people that you want to be judges in this community. So.
And in that, then that judicial watch, uh, Eric and Seth break down really well. Some of the decisions that have been made by judges up here. And understand that just because somebody gets arrested, even if somebody gets convicted, there is still a sentencing, there is still the ability of a judge to determine the outcome of that individual, regardless of the severity of the crime. So please pay attention to that because that affects our community so much.
Yes. Yes. All right. On that note, uh, JD Clerge, thank you, sir. Running for Coeur d'Alene City Council. Look for his name on the ballot. We'll see you out there. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.